Good evening, everyone. Can we stand for the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 10th and October 2nd, 2023, notice was sent to the home news Tribune, Star Ledger, Union County local source, Tap In to and the clerk of the municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein, as is allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Here. Mrs. Fleming?
Here.
Ms. Pino?
Here.
Ms. Rosada-Casada?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Present.
Ms. Armstead?
Here.
Ms. Carrillo?
Present.
Ms. Centron?
Present.
Dr. Burghammer?
Present.
Can I get a motion to approve? Minutes? Motion to approve minutes?
Minutes?
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada-Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
And Dr. Burghammer?
Yes.
Comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize the Raise Your Hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken at least once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on agenda items for three minutes.
Craig Halleran, 120 Donaldson Place. On the education report, I forgot to write down the page. It's on, but number 13 and 14, they're workshops that some of the staff are going to. One is literary development, and the other one is writing effective, IEP for grades pre-K to 12. I would like to know myself, what did these staff members learn at this, and why can't that be shared with the public?
Continue your comment.
The tree lighting.
What you said under professional development.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
You're asking about a professional development training that staff are going to?
Yes.
So you have a two-part question. The first part of the question was, what is the training about? And I didn't find it yet, but I believe you said it was for literacy development?
Yes, and writing effective, IEP for grades pre-K to 12.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not against development courses, don't get me wrong. It's just that, you know, I think it'd be interesting, at least from my perspective, to learn what the staff learned at these workshops and share that with the public.
Okay, well, we have, professional development is embedded into our teachers' practice. Every teacher must have at least 20 hours per year in their teacher practice, so the professional development learning is to enhance anything that they have going on in the classroom or something that they're particularly learning, wanting to learn about. For example, if someone wanted to learn about artificial intelligence, to see how that it can help with student engagement in the classroom, if we don't have those services here in the district, then they can go out. We can always provide you with an overview of what that learning looks like if you want to know specifically. You did just state that it was in reference to literacy development and IEP writing.
Yes.
So the one thing is, is that students who are identified as special education and have an individual education plan, every teacher who is supporting that student will have to know how to write an individual education plan. So with new state mandates and laws, or more importantly, just to gear towards that particular student, the training is just to enhance what they may be wanting to showcase to the student or just to carry out what the state mandate is.
Okay, I do thank you for that.
You're welcome. Comments online? Now we'll have the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to see you out here today. I like to start my report with reminding everyone that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and the volleyball team will be having their Pinkout Day on October 25th. Please come out and support the girls' volleyball game. They're playing Elizabeth. Also, for this month, I'd like to remind you all that we are recognizing October as Bully and Prevention Month, as outlined by the New Jersey Department of Education. So within our district, each of our schools presented activities for the Week of Respect and School Violence and Awareness Week. Students engaged in understanding the importance of kindness, empathy, and problem-solving to ensure that they are able to combat any level of violence, vandalism, or safety and security. And I'm pleased to announce that we had our first student-led assembly, where we had high school students go down to the middle school students for an assembly called Speaking to Your Younger You and Listening to Your Future You. And the students, the class president of Linden High School, the captains of the football team, captains of the cheerleading team, as well as student council, and the TNT News went down to the middle school and showed those students what they are going to look like when they get into high school. But more importantly, remind them that they know where they came from. So they were speaking to their younger you, and I will tell you that it was amazing to see how those middle schoolers were listening to their future self. We'll be having that showcased on our website in the next day or so. We are also going to be surveying those middle school students to see what was impactful for them and what more we can do to encourage student-led learning, peer relationships, as it aligns to not only Violence and Awareness Week, but also social-emotional learning, relationship building, and just being accountable to know that everyone here, we want them to know that they have a sense of belonging at the Linden Public Schools. I'd like to just shout out our custodians for the jobs that they are doing in our district. Thank you for the hard work. Last night, we were at school number nine for a multilingual learning program that was led by our director of our multilanguage learners, and our custodians were there working hard. But they asked us, what else can we do to, what else did they need? Or what else do we need? I'm sorry. What else do we need for the night? And I tried to encourage them that we are here to support them, but more importantly, we weren't doing any overtime, so we weren't going to require any more of them. So thank you to the custodians. In a minute, I am going to be getting up to do our NJSLA and DLA 2023 Student Assessment presentation, and I'd like to just remind you all that if you have any questions after the presentation, I can answer that, but also your school principal. And lastly, Fire Prevention Week is taking place, and it is a pleasure to continue with our partnership with the Linden Fire Department, the Linden Police Department, and our mayor, as we are continuing to strengthen our relationships in our district. Yes, it is School Violence Awareness Week this well, I mean, as well. Thank you, Dr. Burghammer. And yes, we've been doing those different activities, and that's what the student-led assembly yesterday was for, but other schools are doing things as well. But I wanted to get my hands in the pot, too, with the students. So at this time, I'm going to prepare for the NJSLA data presentation.
Attorney report?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna slow down.
Everybody have to go down there.
She's done.
Because the camera.
Again, let's go.
I don't think there are seats.
No.
We have to stand and sit.
Let's go to the back.
After you.
This is crazy.
Sit on four.
I'm not sure who's doing my voice.
That's your voice.
Okay.
Each year, we have to publicly present student data, and this is the 2023 Spring Assessment of the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. So why do we test for the NJSLA? It is because it is federally mandated in the state of New Jersey for us to understand how to assess students' progress towards the NJSLS state standards, and also to identify students' strengths and weaknesses of the acquired skills that they need to have within their grade level, and then also to set baseline for targeted instruction for our students. Overall student outcomes for the testing data indicates that in ELA, the state went up by 2.39% from 2022 to 2023. However, Linden went up by 3.49%. And it's gonna be a great night. In mathematics, the state went up by 2.16%, and in Linden, we went up by 3.9%. Please keep that momentum while I share that in science, the state went up 1.72%, but Linden went down by .08%. And I say keep that momentum because we realize within the Science Department, there were several pieces to it as to why the scores went down. The first thing is, is that our teachers were not in a position to get that professional development learning, where it is a three-tiered approach, where they are able to, and this is for you, Ms. Halleran, and this is where they are trained in the kits that they have to then administer to the students. We had a teacher shortage, we had substitute shortage, and the teachers did not get that training last year. And also, we had a shortage in the middle school, so we attribute those numbers to those reasons. But I say that I want you to celebrate because we're going to conduct it this year, and we're going to be moving forward, and we do believe that we are going to see continued growth from this point on. Also, our data indicates that we've had positive impact on addressing student learning loss. For two years during COVID, students were not taking tests, and as you can see, that teaching and learning has shifted as of post-COVID, but we are able to celebrate, and we are on a trend for future growth. So students were tested in grades 3 through 9 in Language Arts, and this is a quick overview of our district as a whole. And I'd like to draw your attention to the right column because this is going to be 2022 compared to 2023. So overall, in all of our grades, the state was at 48% in 2022, and in 2023, they were at 35%. But in Linden, we were at 31%, but we gained by 3.5% to 35. So while we are not at the state level, there is a gap between Linden and the state by 16.3%, but we are beginning to narrow that gap by .9%. So did we see growth overall? Yes, we did. So as we break down the slides, I'm going to go through each grade level. From last year to this year, students had a 5.7% growth. In third grade, the gap between the state and Linden is negative 9.9% of narrowing that gap, and we gained 6.2% to continue with, narrowing the gap. Okay. Oh, it did go, thank you. In fourth grade, we had a 6.2% increase from 2022 to 2023. So we were at 31% last year, and we are at 38% this year. I'm sorry, the year before. So the gap decreased by 13.3%, and we are getting there closer by a 4.3% gain. Come on. All right. So in math, I'm excited to say that we had a 5% increase from 2022 to 2023, and we are closing the gap by 7% and continuing to narrow it because we've made an increase by 1.3% to get closer to the state number. Earlier, I stated that we did not have teachers in classrooms, and this attributes to our sixth-grade scores. We had a lot of substitutes in sixth grade, so we did see a decline from 2022 to 2023 by 3%. So the gap increased by 26.3%, and we lost gain of growth by 4.5% towards narrowing that gap. In seventh grade, we see the same type of numbers. From 2022, it was 33.7%, and we declined by 5.9% to 27.8. So the gap between Linden and the state is at 27.9%, and we had a loss and decline of getting closer to closing that gap by 8.8%. In eighth grade, we had a 3.6% increase. And so from last year to this year, 33.9% to 37.5%. So the gap is 17.8%, but we are making gain by 1.5% between the district and the state. In ninth grade, we had higher gains. We had a 9.5% from the previous year to 2023. So you see that it's 30% to 39.9%. So the gap is closing by 12% because we are making a gain of 6.4% towards the state. So an overall view of how we did as a whole, I like to see in the green, this is the growth that we made from 21 to 22, I'm sorry, 22 to 23, and you can see by grade level where the gains are at. Yes, we are targeting those two grade levels where we see that there was a decline, but we are proud to say that overall, we've made a lot of growth in the district. When we compare our district to the state, the state overall made a 2.39% gain, but we made a higher gain than the state with a 3.49%. And again, you can see, it goes from lower to higher on this slide, just breaking down the grade levels of how we compare towards the state. In English Language Arts. This is a good slide that I'd like you to know, that we now break down our data to see how did students compare from their third-grade year to their fourth-grade year. So these are the same students. And as you can see, the students in 2022 scored a 26.3%, but then when they went into fourth grade, they gained up to 38%. So you can see, there has been an increase of student growth across the, mostly across the district. And the areas we are focusing on is fifth into sixth and sixth into seventh. But growth is being made, and these are the same students. Whereas in other slides, it was just a holistic view of how they did in that particular year. So now I get into math, and I'd like for everyone to know that math is tested in grades three all the way up to algebra two. And overall, we made a gain of 3.9% from 2022 to 2023. So we're closing the gap by 17% because we had a 1.8% gain. In third grade, there was a 10.8% increase of students testing from 22 to 2023, if you can see here. And we are still, we are 7.5% away from closing the gap because we've had a 10.2% gain in narrowing the gap towards the state. So we are continuing to see growth. In fourth grade, the same thing applies. We are excited that the students in fourth grade, they made a 12.2% increase from 2022 to 2023. So that gap is 15%, and we are narrowing the gap by having a 7.2% increase from the previous year. In fifth grade, we had a 5% increase in student scores from 17% to 22%. The gap is 17.2%, and we made a gain of 1.1% to narrow that gap. In sixth grade, again, we made a gain from 2022 to 2023 with a 1.6% increase. However, our gap between us and the state did widen because we lost game by 1.5%. And again, that is a testing grade where we didn't have a content-specific teacher teaching that last year, but this year we do. In seventh grade, this is where we see a decline in math. We went from 21% in 2022 down to 14.6%. So the gap increased by 9.2% based off of a 6.1% loss. I'd like to share that in eighth grade, some of the students participated in Algebra I assessment in place of the eighth-grade assessment. So the math eighth-grade outcomes are not representative of all of the eighth graders. Algebra's I, II, and geometry are for students, they did not test in grades 11 and 12. So the percentages I'm about to show you for eighth grade and on may not include 100% of that grade level. So for an eighth grade, from 2022 to 2023, they stayed the same. We didn't see any growth. However, there was a gap between Linden and the state by 12.1% because of a 2.3 decline. In Algebra I, we did see an increase from 13.3% to 18% last year, so that's a 5.3% gain. So we are closing the gap by 16% because we have a gain of 5.1%. In geometry, we had a small student population testing, however, we did see growth from 3.5%. We doubled to 7% with growth, but the gap between Linden and the state is 43.5%, and we lost game by 3%. So holistically, these are all of our grades, and as you can see in the green, we did make a lot of gain, and we have the one yellow that is evenly across. So I want you to understand that we are proud of the growth that we are making overall This compares Linden to the state, and the state made a gain of 2.16%, but Linden made a gain overall of 3.9%. So we are higher than the state in the gain and growth that we've made from the previous year. And you can see in the green, those are the different grade levels. Reminder, this is the slide where it starts from lower grade and it goes up to indicate where there's growth, and then there's areas of improvement. The same cohort, again, these are the students who took the test in third grade, and then we wanted to see how, what they do in fourth grade. So you can see that growth was made, fourth into fifth, growth was made, fifth into sixth, there was a decline, but in sixth and seventh, growth, seventh and eighth, decline, in eighth to ninth, there was a decline. So when we get into our science, science is an area where we did not see growth. So in 2022, we were at 14%, and in 2023, we are at 9%. But I'd like to draw your attention to the state as a whole, is that didn't even get to 50% themselves. So we have some work to do with looking at the curriculum, that professional learning, and also student engagement. So the gap between Linden and the state is at 17.2%, and we had a decline in that gap by 5%, 5.7%. In eighth grade, we did see growth from 7.2% to 8.5%. So the gap between us and the state is 10%, and the decline was by 1.6%. And then in 11th grade, we were compared similarly, the same as last year, from 14.8% to 14.7%, but the gap between Linden and the state is at 15.1%. And then we didn't narrow the gap because we had a loss of .9%. So we also disaggregated the data, and the first piece of the data I'd like to share with you, this is our ethnicity, our enrollment. And so the color codes indicate that we have a 48% Hispanic population of our student body, followed by Black and African-American, 31%, and then our white ethnic group is at 14%, multiple and other. So now we looked at how did those students compare in their ethnic group to testing against each other. So in 2022 to 2023, we see that our white students did make a gain, and they are higher than the Black and African-American and Hispanic students. The Black and African-American students, they compared the same, but everybody made growth. And again, our student population, 14%, 48%, 31%. That was in Language Arts, and now this is in math. Again, we see that there was growth made by each ethnic group. The white students- The white students had a growth of 30 to 38%. And our Black and Hispanic students were closely the same. However, our Hispanic students were higher at 17.5% compared to 13% and 15.8% for our African-American students. So now we are looking at our students who are identified as special education or are English language learners who are also called multi-language learners. We did not see growth in any of these two subgroups. So there was a decline for our special education from 8.1% to 6.3%, and our multi-language learners from 7.6% to 3.9. And I'd like to draw your attention to that these are students who, English is not their first language. So they're coming in on a Level 1, and this is the, it indicates where they are not able to read or speak English at that time the test was taken. So in math, we did see an increase in these populations. So our special education went from 4.5% to 6.5, and our ELLs went from 5.3 to 6.5. So we are excited that they were able to show growth in mathematics. So now we look at the data from gender, male to female. And in Language Arts, over the years, you can see the blue is female and the orange is male. That, I'm sorry, not over the years, but throughout the grade levels where the growth is being made. Females are having higher growth in English Language Arts compared to males. And most of the grades without, with the exception of, no, all of the grades. Here in math, you see that it's the opposite, that the males are higher than the females in most of the grades with the exception of third grade. And it goes up and down by grade level. Pushing STEM for the girls, the females. So another one of the components of testing our students is a test called the Dynamic Learning Map. And these are for our special education students who fit into a criteria of that they're unable to take the NJSLA test. So they are students who may have severe cognitive disabilities such as severe autism or multiple learning disabilities. So these students are also assessed in ELL, Math and Science for grades five and eight. So when they do take the test, it is administered one-to-one. It's an individualized test to show what they can do and what they know, and the test is adaptive. So also, the test is provided to these students in chunks so that they can remain focused and engage on taking the test. So it's not as timed as the NJSLA. So the performance levels of the test, they are assessed from emerging, approaching to the target, at-target, or advanced. The number of students who took the test was a total of 63. But I'd like to draw your attention to 20%. 20 of those students are in district, and 43 of them are out of district. So for the ELA, the students, we found that one student fell in the advanced category. 13 were at-target, 15 are approaching, and 30 are emerging. In math, 62 students, we didn't, we had one student at-advanced, 10 students at-target, 12 were approaching, and 39 were emerging. In science, there were 24 students tested. We didn't have any students at-advanced. One student was at-target, four was approaching, and one was emerging. So now what? Now that I've shown you the data, I know you're asking, what are we going to do to ensure that we're making growth for next year? So there's several things that we are going to do. I'm just going to jump around this slide, but I want you to understand, starting with our district-wide instructional leadership teams. Our instructional leadership teams are comprised of every school, of a building administrator, and various teachers from multiple disciplines. They take the NJSLA data, they look at it, and they align it to what the state standards say. They see the strengths, the weaknesses. And then they come back into the schools led by their administrator to look at teacher pedagogy, to look at class-student engagement, and also to see how they can build collective efficacy. We've started with those training sessions with them, and the feedback has been amazing. I'm pleased to announce, and I think I see him here, it is led by one of our instructional coaches, and that is Mike Pecos. And also, give it up for Mike Pecos, right? We did great things. Another component of how are we continuing to have student progress is that we have instructional coaches. We have them in math and language arts and multiple disciplines where they are going into the classrooms to model teacher lessons for pedagogy. And more importantly, it's coaching and mentoring. Within the science classrooms, we are pleased to announce that we are going to be having classroom support learning through a science initiative where they're going to be coming in. The students are, the teachers are using the FAWSS science kits, and they are going to be coming into the classrooms and doing job-embedded teaching and learning. There's also professional development training that take place. And one of the things too, Ms. O'Halloran, is that when the teachers do go to training or administrators as well, we then have to come back and turnkey it to the entire staff that's there. So it's not just here, it's presented to everyone. Because teaching and learning is more than just when you go to an event, it's to enhance teaching practices. Across the district, we have content-specific professional development. We have new curriculum in elementary, math, and language arts. And so we provide our teachers with additional in-district training here on-site. We also have in-science, we're going back to that three-tiered approach where they'll be getting professional development. We continue to increase and expose and seek parent involvement. So every month, we do district-wide parent involvement activities as well as on the different school levels. We also have tutoring that we offer virtually and on-site. We also have enrichment programs. For those students who are exceeding or on-grade level with the assessment, we continue to enhance those skills. And I'm pleased to announce that this evening, we are going to be showcasing several students who had a perfect score on the NJSLA. I just learned two days ago, when I got a notice from the Department of Education that the New Jersey Student Learning Standards have been revised. They just came out. So I just informed our administrators that they, we all need to sign up to now learn how the standards have changed to ensure that we're embedding those practices in the classroom. And then in third through fifth grade, we have departmentalization where teachers are teaching specific, just several classes of math or EL, Language Arts. And I think I am, oh, this is the same thing. I didn't think the slide came up, so I said those things. But this is the last slide, questions. Okay. Before I close out, I just want to acknowledge Mr. Kondradowitz. Please, he helped put this presentation together. He is our data analysis, our data dude, and I'm thank you for you being here. So now at this time, I'm just going to transition into who are those students who had a perfect score on the NJSLA? Our Assistant Superintendent is coming up with those certificates. A perfect score on the test means that they knocked it out the box. You get a score from 650 to 850. And across the district, and we haven't seen this in many years, where we have four students in multiple grade levels. And their teachers are here with them. Let's start from the lowest grade up. That says. Nope, it's another one, keep going. Keep going. I think that's it. Okay. So a perfect score in Language Arts in eighth grade, last year, eighth grade. I'd like for Adriana Linda to come up, as well as her teacher. Who was here? You're in ninth grade now. I'm sorry. No, 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 stay on up here, we're going to take a picture, all right? A perfect score. Did you expect that? Just say yes.
Yeah, I did.
You always got to think the best of yourself, right? All right, thank you, we'll take a group, oh. We'll get your principal up as well, Mr. Koontz. Stay on up, we're going to go over there. Patrick McKim is your teacher here, Patrick? Okay, well, Patrick had a perfect score in English Language Arts as well. So we have a third grader who's now a fourth grader, Lucas Ramos. And his teacher is here, I believe, is your. And your building principal, hi, Lucas. Congratulations. You expected to get a perfect score, didn't you?
No.
Oh, oh, well, you did, and we are so proud of you. Look at everybody out there. Where's your principal? We expected your principal to come up, and then we needed Mr. Koontz to come up too, yeah, that's what I. Your teacher, come on back up, come on back up. Well, and your teacher, right? She's not your teacher anymore, right?
I was teacher for two years. Congratulations, good job.
Congratulations, thank you. And so then, sorry, Mr. Koontz. She's just getting there with you now, right? All right, Lucas, that's your certificate? And so then, we have an ELA ninth grade, Athos Mora Lima. All right, Mr. Koontz, you have another student. But from last year, what middle school were you in last year? When you took the test here, last year?
No, you took it last year, it was in, it was ninth grade.
Oh, you're, so you're. You're a 10th grader now, so I made a mistake. All right, so Mr. Koontz, we're giving it up to you again, congratulations. Right now, so Athos, you knew you were going to get a perfect score, right?
Yeah, I did.
I know, see, this is what I'm talking about. Confidence is virtue, that's it, and that's it, right? So here's our group. We'd like to take a group picture with all of you over there. And we just want to say thank you for representing our district. Thank you for representing yourselves, and. Dr. Berghammer, I got you. You know, Dr. Berghammer wants to make sure that we are pulling up everybody that is playing an active role in our student outcomes and also leading our district. You want the mic? No, 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 not yet, not yet, not yet. All right, so. Keep up the great work, we're so proud. And now we. Okay. And so now, Dr. Berghammer, this is when you stay, it's almost your time. All right, so Dr. Berghammer and the Board of Education and any board members that would like to join me, we are now transitioning into our It Takes a Village. Excellent. Okay, and our It Takes a Village campaign started last month because the Linden Board of Education wanted to increase our partnerships with the city of Linden. And so the It Takes a Village campaign is where we ask city officials, we ask building principals and community members to identify students and adults who are making a difference in our district. We are proud to stand with them. We are proud to see the great things that they are doing, and we get down to celebrate them. So we recognize a student on the elementary level, and then we recognize a student on the secondary level. And I have with me Assistant Superintendent Ms. Lewis, who will be providing the names. So we're going to call up Mr. Walk or the principal of our recipient from the secondary level. I said, I didn't say elementary, oh, I said secondary. All right, yeah, that's right, elementary level. So. Would you like to announce the award? Excellent, here you go.
So I don't even know where to start because Amelia is an amazing, amazing student. Not only academically, but every year for Martin Luther King Day, she takes on a service project. She's raised thousands for the Linden Animal Shelter, other organizations. And last year, we have a growing need of School 10 among our population. And because of her efforts and her amazing family, we were able to fund and launch the School 10 Paw Pantry. This is a food pantry for our School 10 community. I'm just so proud of you, Amelia. This all started because of her wonderful idea. And so Amelia, come on up here and receive your It Takes a Village Award.
I'm sorry, she said, yes, I knew I was going to do that, and I was going to get that. Yes, Amelia. So the certificate says, "The following award is given to Amelia Hanger in recognition for ongoing commitment, dedication, and service for strengthening partnerships in the Linden Public Schools District." Yes, that's it, I see you, this girl is on fire. I see it, I see it. And we'd like to give you a shirt. And also, at the end of the school year, we're going to be raffling off different types of monetary gift certificates for all of the recipients. So stay here, keep doing great things, and your name's going to get pulled out, and hopefully you'll be, receive even more things, okay? I know that's right. Don't leave now, we're going to take some pictures. Over there. So now for our secondary award, I'd like to call up Mr. Koontz as the building principal for the secondary award. Before I turn the microphone over to Mr. Koontz, I want to say that I am excited that this award is going to a student that I had the pleasure of meeting when I was the middle school principal. And this student has a charisma about himself. He, his just being and existence in this world is contagious because he knows what he wants. And he not only knows what he wants, but he shares it with others. He was a student who also came with me to help out with the student assembly. And he took the microphone, and he said to all of the middle school students, "You have to understand that you matter," these are my words, but he said, "The bottom line is, you have to be productive in this world. You have to use your skill set because that's what his dad taught him, that everybody is built with the skill. And this is the time in middle school where you will understand, you may not understand, but your future, and I'm your future, looking at me, is going to be important to you. So make good choices, be a good person." And so I am elated to say not only that I know you, but you really touch a big piece of my heart because you're a person who just won't stop for going after what you want. Miles Hamilton. Miles Hamilton. So I am turning the microphone over to Mr. Hamilton, I mean, Mr. Kuntz, right? She didn't recognize him. You're a senior, and you're going to be leaving us pretty soon, because you have to. But I do know, we all know whoever knows you, we know that your presence will remain with us. And you even said it too, that you're gonna come back, because you have to give back, because that's who you are. So you're paying it forward before you leave, and we need you, Miles, and we're just thankful for you being a part of the Linden Public Schools District, thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Perkins. I have to reiterate those wonderful, wonderful points that Superintendent Perkins made about Miles Hamilton. He is an exceptional young man. He possesses all of the attributes that it takes to lead young men and women on and off the field. When I met him last year, I saw instantly that he was an extraordinary individual, and he has accomplished so many, so many goals, and he is an example to all of our young people today. In the day and age where so many of our young people unfortunately are doing negative things, this young man is doing positive things, and he is someone that I salute day in and day out. He has been accepted to Sacred Heart University, yes. And I know he's going to represent Linden and Linden High School in an extraordinary way. I salute you, Miles, congratulations, once again, Miles Hamilton.
Come on up, family, take a picture with Miles. He said, everybody. Okay, so now, I am pleased to have our City Council President, Ms. Yamakitis, with us, who provided us with what we believe and truly support, recognizing one of our community members who served within the city, but also within our district. So I'll turn the microphone over.
Good evening, everyone. I have the pleasure of presenting Sandra Vasquez for this award. When you think of It Takes a Village, Sandy is right there for the village on all fronts. She, I started, I was introduced to Sandy as a band parent, and she was also involved with ROTC. Our children graduated, but somehow Sandy's still involved with every project with schools. She chairs Project Graduation, she's involved in so many things with the city. If there's something to do with the children, Sandy's right there. She took on the Hooked on Fishing, Not on Drugs project, where she works with our younger children. So when you think of somebody that's doing for the community, Sandra Vasquez is the first person that comes to mind. So Sandy, would you please come up? You wanna say something?
Uh, good evening, I am shocked and humbled at the same time. I do love this community. I started hosting, or I guess, yeah, this is so sweet.
Don't cry.
No, I won't cry. My youngest son graduated in 2017, my oldest son graduated in 2015, and I thought that after that, I'd just walk away, but I couldn't. I mean, we have Donna's kids, Tanya's kids, Olga's kids, we are a village. And I really enjoy working with the youth, and I'll continue to do so until you chase me out. Thank you. Aw, thank you, my God, thank you so much for allowing me to continue.
Literally, for you showing up, you choose to show up, so we thank you for being here.
Alright, so our last award goes to a staff member. And collectively, we thought about who could be a staff member that we represent as we are moving into the school year, who continues to make sure that we are moving forward. And so I think of a staff member, however, it is staff members, because if you see one, you will always see the other. And this award goes to our two maintenance supervisors, Jay Anderson and Rolando Ramirez. They lead our maintenance staff, our buildings. And they're doing an amazing job. So, you know, Dr. Tomazek always said to have that amethyst mindset, and you two are just like, you know, I don't know, I don't wanna say Tom and Jerry, or just like, uh, like, you're just always together, but you're feeding off of each other, but you show up and you help move our district forward. Anytime anyone asks you anything, you say just, yes, I'm there. And before we can even ask, you're there. So we just wanna say thank you for your commitment and dedication to our district, and we appreciate everything that the both of you are doing. So now we are transitioning, congratulations, I said, it's your guy. Now we are going to transition to, October is Principal's, National Principals Month. October is National Principals Month! And we are so excited that we get to honor our principals for the job that they are doing in and out of our district. I'm trying to just get settled. So surprise, principals, one of the things. Oh, definitely, definitely. So It Takes a Village recipients, if you can go back over to the backdrop, because the entire Board of Education would like to take a picture with you all, all the Board of Education members. So what I have on the screen is now on our website. And principals, we want to say thank you, we had your secretaries reach out to your school community, and on our website, you will now see all of the well wishes that your community, your school say about you. Tonight, we get to honor you, and our Board of Education want you to know that you matter and that we need you. So this evening, we're going to call each of you up. We'll call each of you up, and we would like to present you with a certificate. Where are my principals at? Where are my principals at? I see you. School one, School one, Ms. Diaz, School two, Mr. Fingerland, School four, Dr. Olivero, School five, Ms. Crawley, School six, Mr. Mastriano, where is he? Okay, School eight, Ms. Rodriguez, School nine, Ms. Principato, School ten, Mr. Walker. We have soul in the house, Ms. Law. Mr. Walters could not be here tonight for McNannas, but we have Mr. Kuntz for the high school. Where did Mr. Kuntz go? Alright, so thank you, principals. So you'll go on our website, you will see that. I'd also like to say that, within the certificate that we give you, I know what it's like to be a principal, I've been a principal the most in my career thus far. And so I want to help honor you. So within your certificate, you will have a lunch voucher for me that says, "You go take a lunch when you want, and I will come cover you." Now, if your lunch needs to be before you come in, you need to leave early, or a regular lunch break, just know that I'm here for you to go to take care of yourselves. But it gets a little better, my executive leadership team said, well, we, they need a lunch too, so they want, they wanna help you get a lunch another day too. So they're gonna come cover you when you want that as well. And then, before you leave here tonight, we are pleased to say that we have a surprise for you in the back, in room 100, that we would like for you, once we recognize you, for you to just go back, and that is on behalf of the Linden Board of Education, they wanted to give you dinner. It is donated by Kitchen 27, but just know, you matter, and keep on doing what you're doing with leading our schools, principals. So now, Dr. Berghammer would like to read her speech.
You know, being a principal, I have worked in higher education most of my life, but there is so many essential people that are around us every day, and we take them for granted. And when, when someone said, you know, this is principals' month, I decided to really dig in, to try to figure out what a principal does. And in honor of all the principals at, in the Linden School District, I wrote a small, a short note for you guys. I asked a couple of the teachers in our schools what they thought our principals do. A teacher once told me that a principal is like a firefighter, they outfires all day. He went on to say that the only time anyone goes into a principal office is because they are in trouble. He added that being a principal can be a lonely job. I never thought of a principal that way, but now I understand, and will always agree, that a school principal is an essential worker. And no school district could survive without them. Let me share with you some of the day-to-day things our principals are tasked with doing every day. Each principal is responsible for the success and failure of their school, and they put the needs of others in front of their own. They are adept at building relationships with others. Our principals never know who is going to walk through their office door next, but they are prepared for whatever comes, whatever or whoever comes into their office. And they balance tough love with earned praises. Our principals set expectations high and hold those in charge accountable. Our principals are fear and consistent, they document their. Oh, I can't believe I didn't even have my glasses on. Oh, Lord, I no realize I can't see. Oh, this is funny, let me try it. Our principals are fear and consistent, they document their reasoning, and are prepared when someone questions or disagree with them. Our principals are excellent listeners and can disarm most demanding situations simply by showing those involved that they are cared for, and they are cared enough to listen to with both parties to have a say. Additionally, because education is ever-evolving, our principals are visionaries. They are always attempting to improve their school, even if that principal has been in that school for over 15 years. They continue to improve the overall appearance, the quality of education, and the safety of their schools. Finally, our principals work hard at seeing that no one gets comfortable, and that everyone is working to improve our Linden School District. The Linden Board of Education is honored to be the wind beneath your wings. Now, I would like to invite up here for each and every one of you guys to see the gentleman who has prepared dinner. When I went and I approached him and I said, "We want to honor our principals," Kitchen 27 said, "I will be honored to prepare dinner for our principals." Would you like to come up, and the owner of Kitchen 27? You started, you started your restaurant how long ago?
Two and a half months.
Two and a half months ago, he started his restaurants. And when I knocked on his door, he opened. I, I hope the food tastes good.
Hopefully it will.
So in recognition of all our principals, we would now present our awards, and then, Mr. Ryan Devaney and Ms. Hernandez will escort you guys back and be a host and hostess for your dinner. Okay?
So we'll start with Ms. Norma Diaz from School one, please come on up. Ms. Pino said, "You are great," look at that, and she thanks you for all that you do, Ms. Diaz. We're going to ask that all principals then come over to the backdrop, so we can take a group photo, congratulations. Mr. Fingerland from School number two, please come on up. Ms. Centron, would you like to say something?
Mr. Fingerland, you have meant so much to me and my family, we appreciate you, and keep up the good work, we really do. Thank you, thank you so much.
Congratulations. Alright, School number four, Dr. Olivero.
You know, you are my best.
Congratulations. Alright, School number five, Ms. Crawley. Thank you, Ms. Crawley.
Thank you, thank you so much.
School number six, Mr. Mastriano.
Wow, you got a whole section there.
I think I'm as red as my shirt right now.
Okay, so, I am gonna say a couple of words, I cannot top Dr. Berghammer's speech, but I'm gonna try to do something similar. Um, when I was in school, I think I saw the principal twice, and that was K through eight, and then high school. I've never seen a principal as much as I see them now. Mr. Mastriano, it's not only an honor, it's my pleasure to give you the certificate. I've got to know you through two kids already, and we've gone through, and I still know more kids than School number six, and I thank you for everything you do, and thank you for being such a great guy. Congratulations.
Alright, School number eight, Ms. Rodriguez.
Mrs. Rodriguez, you are a wonderful woman. You show up and you show out every day for our students. And we love you, we truly do, thank you for all that you do for our students at School eight, because at School eight, everything is great.
You're amazing. School number nine, Mrs. Principato.
Ms. Principato, wanted to say, you are a hard worker with the kids. The kids in Linden are your kids. So you, I cannot say enough about you, how, the way you work with the kids, since you were a teacher and now you're a principal.
That's it. School Number Ten, Mr. Walker.
I didn't even know this was happening, but it's obviously a 360 for us. You were my teacher and I see you as a principal and I am honored. I know last time I saw him, I cried and I'm trying not to cry now.
Okay, and now we have Soul Middle School, Ms. Long.
Hi, Mrs. Long. Again, another 360 moment because she was my teacher in the classroom and she's one of the few teachers that you have that you remember from your childhood until your adulthood. So thank you for making an impact in my life. I love you so much.
McManus Middle School, Mr. Walters is not here, but we can recognize him. And last but never least, our flagship school, Linden High School, Mr. Coons.
Mr. Coons, at every meeting, at everything, you're everywhere. It is an honor and a privilege to give you this award. Thank you for coming to Linden.
And so now we'll ask that all principals, if you can come together so we can get a
You may need like three rows. Now you know that's not, you gotta get three rows. You have to be in the boundaries of the screen. So three rows, that means you gotta move up, you know, right? Move up, move up. Everybody take one step forward.
People have to go behind, yeah. Like you gotta be in the boundaries of the.
Gotta be in the boundaries of the orange board, okay?
Again, congratulations to our principals. And so as we transition back to, well, as I get ready to close out the superintendent's report, I'd like to call back up.
Your name again?
Mr. Peter from Kitchen 22 for one more announcement.
I just wanted to thank everyone. I want to present for gift certificates to It Takes a Village for the raffle. It's a pleasure being here and it's an honor to be able to give food for the principals, for the principals' day today. Thank you.
All the principals, would you please, all the principals, would you please, Mr. Devaney and, yeah, we have dinner prepared for you in the back. Listen, think about me when you're eating, okay?
No, it is because it's big. The mirror is big.
We gotta move, yeah, we gotta move our agenda items. You do comments from the public, then unfinished business, then your board comments.
That wasn't the smartest thing. So now we're doing.
Ann had that pegged. She said, "We're going to start the meeting until 8:00, 8:30."
I did it.
It was bad.
Whenever you're done.
Let me rephrase that. Was that it?
They're up pretty quickly. I just, I just worry about garlic and onion.
All right, take care, my house come.
You're welcome.
Congratulations, congratulations. Okay, okay.
Bye, everybody's leaving.
Guys, I apologize. I didn't realize I wasn't wearing my glasses.
And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Will the Chair of the Education Report please present?
Ready, okay. The Education Committee, upon recommendation of Superintendent of Schools and Assistant Superintendent, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I approve one through 32. 32, I respectfully get a second, please.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Caesada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
I would like to recuse myself from item number seven, 64 through 66. Yes to all other agenda items.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer.
Will the Chair of the Personnel Report present?
The Personnel Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. All appointments and reappointments are contingent upon and may be modified based on student participation and the district's receipt of sufficient state school aid and other revenue funding. I approve items one through 52 and I respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Caesada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer.
Before you, before you move to the next agenda item, Mrs. Fleming, our superintendent would like to say something.
Congratulations to all of our new hires. We are excited for you. Welcome to Linden. It is official. We always like to honor and give our administrators a moment to come up to the microphone and share a few words because you will continue with leading our teacher staff and support and we would like to get to know you more. So at this time, any administrators who would like to come, hi. Ms. McGillis.
Ms. Tanya, before you speak, I have to say something.
Of course.
Yesterday, we had an event, an ELL event at School Number Nine, and I was totally amazed. Over 300 families and their children showed up to this event. So, so while I was talking, I, she, you know, I was talking to Tanya and I said, "How you feel?" She held my hand and she said, "Dr. Berghammer, I am the happiest woman in the world. Do you know what that is like coming from an educator? That, when you hear educators say that they are happy doing their job in this world where there is so, so much chaos around us and we have people who can actually enjoy teaching students? I honor you today. Thank you very much."
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And that was not done alone. It was done with an amazing team, a lot of them here today who came and supported us.
Good evening. Today I stand before you with a heart overflowing with gratitude, humility, and immense pride. It is an honor to address Dr. Berghammer, our Board President, the distinguished members of the Linden Board of Education, Superintendent Mrs. Perkins, Assistant Superintendents Ms. Lewis and Mr. Olivera. My esteemed colleagues, parents, friends, and community members, I want to express my deep gratitude to the Linden Board of Education for entrusting me with the role of Supervisor of ESL bilingual and world languages. It is a position, a position that holds a special place in my heart. Seventeen years ago, my journey in this incredible district began as a passionate and eager Spanish teacher. Little did I know then that this journey would be a life-changing experience, one that would shape my identity and purpose as an educator. Over the years, I have had the privilege of witnessing the growth and transformation of our students, guiding them as they embarked on their educational journeys. It has been a true privilege to be a part of their lives and see the impact of our work on their academic and personal development. My connection to this community runs deeper than my professional role. I am a proud product of Linden. I grew up here, attended both Soul Middle School and Linden High School. This is a place I call home and therefore have a profound sense of responsibility towards the education of our children. I would like to take this moment to acknowledge the invaluable support of my parents, my loving husband, and my wonderful children. Their unwavering encouragement, love, and understanding have been the bedrock of my career and my personal life. I would also like to express my gratitude to my friends, my colleagues, who have stood by me and believed in my potential. Your support, advice, and camaraderie have been vital in my professional growth. In particular, I must extend my profound appreciation to Danny Orly, whose belief in me has been a driving force in reaching this point in my career. I am forever grateful for your guidance and your leadership. The role of Supervisor of ESL bilingual and world languages is both an honor and a significant responsibility. It is an opportunity to give back to the community that has given me so much, to contribute to the enhancement of our educational programs, and to help shape the future of our multilingual students. I am fully aware of the challenges and responsibilities that come with this role and I pledge to fulfill my duties with unwavering dedication and professionalism always. I am eager to collaborate with teachers, parents, and the broader community to ensure that each student, regardless of their background, has the opportunity to excel. I am excited to embark on this new chapter in my career and together continue our collective journey of shaping the educational landscape of the Linden School District.
I should have went first. Good evening. Superintendent, Mrs. Perkins, Assistant Superintendent Ms. Lewis, and Mr. Olivero, Board President Dr. Berghammer, and members of the Board, uh, Linden Board of Education. I would like to express my deepest gratitude for the incredible opportunity to serve as the CTE Resource Teacher within the Linden Public Schools. Your trust and confidence in me means a lot and I am excited and honored to embark on this journey. In particular, I would like to acknowledge the fantastic work we're doing and is being done for the special needs children within our district. Their commitment to their education and well-being is truly commendable. I'm thrilled to be a part of the community that values inclusion and support for every student and I'm eager to contribute to this essential work. Moreover, I am absolutely delighted to help be a part of the Special Olympics that initiative. My involvement with Special Olympics, I am committed to making positive impact on the lives of our students. I can't express how thrilled I am about both these incredible opportunities. Once again, thank you for entrusting me with this important work and I look forward to collaborating with all of you to create a brighter future for our students.
Will the Chair of the Finance Committee please present?
The Finance Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator, Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I approve items one through 25. I respectfully ask.
I'm, I'm sorry, there's two more that got added on.
Oh, got it. Okay. I approve items one through 27. I respectfully ask for a second.
Members of the public, the, the two resolutions just got walked on. They're at the table right now if you're looking for them. One is for, it was for the surprise, so we, we didn't want the principals to know that there was going to be a dinner tonight, so it was accepting at dinner and then also accepting the donation that Kitchen 27 presented.
Roll call.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Caesada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
Next, we'll have the Chairman of Building Grounds Security, please present.
The Buildings, Grounds, and Security Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator, Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Number one through number seven.
I ask for a second.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Caesada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
And Ms. Centron.
Yes.
Next, we'll move to Planning and Policy.
The Planning and Policy Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Item one, second reading of policy 5131.6 and 5131.6 regulation. I respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Second. Roll call.
Mr. De La Cruz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Pino?
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Caesada?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
And Dr. Berghammer.
Ms. Carrillo?
Yes.
Ms. Centron?
Yes.
All right, now we'll move on to comments from the public. Members of the public desiring to make a public comment may come forward at this time. For those watching online, if you wish to make a comment or ask a question, please utilize Raise Your Hand feature on the online meeting platform. Please begin your comments by stating your name and address. Individuals are invited to speak on one topic at a time, and no individual will speak more than once until all individuals so desiring have spoken once. The public is reminded that to ensure the efficient and orderly operations of the meeting, members of the public will be limited to speaking on items for three minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Danny Orlean. I'm the Director of the Multilingual Learners Education and also World Languages. At this time, I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate Tanya McGillis, an amazing young lady. Our district is so lucky to have you. I'll never forget when you first came on board. The first thing I did, I handed you your bilingual code and I said, learn this, and you will understand what I'm talking about. And I have to say, it's challenging. Our bilingual, multilingual learners population is growing in Linden at a rapid rate, and I have to say, having you on my team is, I feel so blessed to have you. I have never met someone who has so much in common. We're both only child, you know, we're both spoiled by our parents, and we're both hardworking. We're dedicated to whatever we do. We work, we just do 100%, you know, and we get along so well. It is, I get, when I get up in the morning and I know I'm going to meet Tanya, we laugh so much. We love what we do. We're dedicated, and to the point, I have to tell Tanya, we have to stop it. People, we're having too much fun. We're having such a great time doing what we do for our children. And I have to say, last night, we held our first parent night, and it was touching to see so many parents show up. Like Dr. Berghammer said, we had close to 300 parents. That has never happened in the history of Linden. Never. We had so many parents and their family show up because they wanted to learn more. And research tells you that when parents are engaged, our students succeed. And it was so wonderful. And I have to say, I feel so blessed as the Director of the Multilingual Learners Department to have such an amazing team. And they are here. Thank you. And I have to say, one thing Dr. Berghammer, the President of the Board, said to me, she said, Danny, how do you get all your teachers to come out? You know, I shared my vision with them, you know, and they know when you care. And our, we have the most dedicated staff in the Linden Public School. They come out on weekends to help out our parents, because our parents, they need a lot of help. You know, they need to feel welcome. And I have to say, at the end of the night, last night, there were so many parents that came up and said, thank you. Thank you. We appreciate what you're doing. Thank you for making us feel welcome. And I couldn't have done this without my team. And Tanya, thank you for accepting the challenge, because you know my standards are up here. You know, it's the only child syndrome. You know, failure is not an option, and we work hard and we get along so well. And it really is a blessing to get up every day and to come to work and to have such an amazing team. An amazing team who believe in our children, that believe that our children can do anything. And I feel so blessed to work in the Linden Public School and to work with an amazing team, and to have the support of the Board who understand what needs to be done, and to work for an amazing superintendent. I appreciate what you do every day. It's not easy, but we appreciate your support for our multilingual learners and the Board, we appreciate that you believe in them. Because so many of our multilingual parents, they're afraid to come to our school, but now they feel that they belong. They are welcome. And I thank you for your support. Okay, have a blessed night and congratulations.
She has a comment. We have a comment.
We would like to honor one of our board members who is leaving us today. It's Jennifer Fleming. Today's her last day on the board, and this board, you know how I like to celebrate everybody. You know, I believe that life is like a tree, all right? A tree lose leaves, but new leaves spring up. And that's why trees last forever, and that's why we all would last forever. So Ms. Fleming, this Board of Education want to acknowledge your last day on the board by giving you, what do we have, do we have anything for her?
Yes.
But more calories?
It's over there. It's over there.
That's okay. That's okay.
No, it's over there.
Still being signed. I love you guys, too.
You know, I had a certificate for you, but I think I lost it.
That's okay. We'll figure it out later.
Maybe we give it to one of the principals.
It has been an honor and a pleasure, and it has been a lot of hard work. But Linden is worth it. You have so many great people, so many great children. I'm military, so I travel, came from California. I'm not from Linden. As soon as I got to Linden, we had a house fire, and the mayor stood outside of our house, who was our fourth ward councilman at the time, stood outside of our house and watched him, because we were not home, until people came and boarded it up and locked it down. That was my first experience with you. My last experience will be this. I appreciate, adore, all of your hard work. I have seen the teachers' hard work. I have seen the children, they work hard. They are so smart this year, every year. But this year, I met some really great kids this year. And so this, I am glad to leave at a time where we have great people on the board. I'm not worried. I feel very comfortable leaving. We have great people that know what they're doing. I just thank you. You're a beautiful community, beautiful. And I thank you for allowing me to be here to serve you. Diana Ara, you want to make your presentation now?
Good evening, citizens of Linden. School leadership starts with caring, and today we recognize this quality in each, in each one of our school principals, who without a doubt have the second most difficult job in our district.
The first one is yours, Ms. Perkins.
But I'm sure that if they had one question among their strategies, they would continue to request that our parents make their best effort to collaborate with our school staff to achieve the best education for our children. Throughout the years, I have personally witnessed the job of our principals. And while I congratulate and recognize each one of you guys, I would like to take the time to personally say thank you to the school principal, school forever, Ms. Olivera. I have witnessed your passion and dedication while my children attended the school forever. And I cannot thank you enough for the support that you have provided to our kids and to us, all the parents at the school.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Ms. Diana Ara.
Yes.
We're not at board member comments yet? I just want to make sure. I'm so sorry. You're going to have to say all that again. I am so sorry.
Yes.
I apologize to you.
I thought you wanted-
We'll hear you two times. It's all right. I have, I have yours.
Yes, that's what I thought you were going to do. Anyway, let's do it later. Let's continue-
Let's finish out public comments.
Yeah, let's finish out public comments, yes.
If, if, okay, thank you. Sorry.
Craig Heller in 120 Donaldson Place. I do have several topics, but I know I'm only limited to one, but I would like to first say that Ms. Fleming, you will be missed. I know I will miss you.
Thank you.
My comment for tonight is, I know the school system is exploding with new students. Where are we going to put them all? Has anybody worked on that yet?
Yes.
Okay, I, I think that's a great idea. Let's keep it going. Keep working at it. And as you look at the expansion that's needed, I do wish that you would include the ideas for libraries in the schools, along with the staffing to man those libraries. Okay? And I don't want to take up any more time. I know we've taken up a lot, but I do have other topics which I will take up at another time. Thank you very much.
He's just a little bit taller than I am. Good evening, Claudia Dolan, 1309 Thomas Ave, mathematics instructional coach at Schools Five and Ten, and Linden Education Association Vice President. Thank you so much to Mrs. Perkins for the presentation on the state testing data, and thank you to Mr. Kandranowitz for helping out and putting that together, and also for presenting that to the ILT members over the last couple of weeks in conjunction with Mike Pacos. I recognize that for some in the audience, the test scores just look like numbers, and numbers don't tell the whole story. What those numbers don't show is teachers navigating, teachers at the elementary level navigating a new math program, doing their all to make it fun and engaging. As Mrs. Perkins stated, those numbers don't show the amount of missed PD opportunities due to teacher and sub shortage. Those numbers don't show the amount of students that are still making up for learning loss from COVID, and those numbers don't show the amount of teachers we lost and the gaps in classrooms that existed and still exist. I am so, so, so proud of our teachers for navigating new platforms and programs tirelessly year after year, and overall showing up for our kids. Thank you. Have a great night.
Good evening. It's with great distinction and joy that I'm here tonight to share a few words of congratulations to the newly appointed world language bilingual ESL supervisor, Tanya McGillis. For nearly the past two decades, Tanya and I have had parallel careers in the Linden Public Schools District as world language teachers. In that time, I've been able to see her professional growth, watch her build incredible bonds with students, and take on numerous challenges and responsibilities. In my recent role as the International Baccalaureate Coordinator, I have seen firsthand the tremendous impact that Mrs. McGillis has had with her students. Native and non-native Spanish speaker alike find success in her class. The evidence is clear, as her IB students perform with near-perfect passing rates every single year. She has the power and ability to meet the students' needs on an individual basis. She realizes the importance of building relationships and community in the classroom and provides students with the tools and skills necessary to succeed. While I will certainly miss her presence in the IB program, I know she will now have an even greater reach and influence as her new role as supervisor. I have no doubt that Tanya's skills and abilities as a teacher will transfer to her new role in order to meet the mission and vision of the world language program. I am certain that Tanya will provide all students with a voice and allow them to take ownership of their learning. Finally, I believe that under the guidance and leadership of Mrs. McGillis, the world language program, ESL and bilingual, is in the best care, with the interest of all stakeholders taken into consideration. Thank you, and once again, Tanya, congratulations.
Good evening. My name is Rashawn Shivers. I'm here on behalf of the newly appointed supervisor, Ms. Tanya McGillis. I actually had the honor and privilege of having Ms. McGillis as a teacher. My sophomore year at Linden High School, and I can truly say that she had a profound impact on my life, and I just want to say congratulations. I, literally, when I found out, I was like, oh my goodness, who else more deserving to fulfill this role? And I know that the students that she will encounter, she will make a difference within their lives, the same that she made in mine. Ms. McGillis, again, congratulations.
Good evening. Tanya Grissette, 422 South Wood Avenue. I'm up here, I know I spoke last week. The cake looks really yummy.
Sorry.
That's okay. You made me lose my train of thought. I know I spoke last, last month's meeting in regards to some things that I had witnessed at the previous football game, and that the, the team was here with some cheerleaders, marching band. So I wanted to thank all of you for listening to our children, listening to our future, and keeping the senior night game tomorrow night. It's greatly appreciated, and I know it meant a lot to me, as well as a lot of other parents, as well as the children, that, that we were able to keep it as senior night. I do look forward to seeing some of you at the game tomorrow night, hopefully. Please, we're usually busy, but please stop by and see us at the concession stand. We'll be in there. What else did I want to say? I did say that I had an email that went out to the mayor and to Chief Hart into some of the things that I had witnessed at that game. So I just wanted to let you know that we always talk about communication. Well, communication came because Chief Hart forwarded that email, and I did have a nice conversation with one of the lieutenants in town. He gave me his point of view on the police officers' roles at some of our activities, as well as what our security that we provide. So I just had a question in regards to that, because I was trying to put two and two together. I know I usually see close to 15 officers at the games, but security, do we have an idea, or can we get a head count on what type of security we staff from the Board of Education at these games? I don't know if that's known now, or if we can find that out later, if we have an idea.
I would prefer not to disclose how many people, I, I don't want to disclose what security measures we take that could compromise the effectiveness of those measures, but-
I don't understand why it couldn't be disclosed. I'm saying, at the games, just for instance, one of the games, there's hundreds of people there. If I see 15 police officers, do we have that same amount in security? Because the way it was brought to my attention, and again, the lieutenant, I don't remember his name, so I can get that if you need it, was discussed that when there's an issue at one of the games, and I'm just using the football game for an example, it's our security's responsibility to take care of an issue that comes up, and then they're there as backup.
So, as an initial matter, I don't know who you spoke to, or what they said, or what they- or what they said or what the context. I don't know that I, well, I do know that I don't agree with that characterization that you just relayed or that was relayed to you. But I don't really think it serves a purpose for us to debate that, because again, I wasn't privy to the conversation.
No, I'm not. I'm not here to debate.
I didn't say you were. As far as you asked why, I thought I explained why we can't share that information, because there may be security that you see, there may be security that you don't see. And I don't want to disclose things that could compromise the effectiveness of the security measures that we have in place in those games, or let people know what our strategies are or our security measures are. That is confidential information. Now, if you want to know the number of security personnel we have, I mean, if we know it, I don't know that I would have a problem.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like I want, I don't want their names and everything like that. I'm just saying, if you're looking at 300 people, between children and adults in Linden Public Schools, in the city of Linden, as well as the visiting towns, you know, it was a little eye-opening to me that the police weren't there for, I forgot how it was worded. And again, it came down to communication. So maybe there's miscommunication between who staffs the police to be at the game, as well as the security team.
We also have an item on this particular agenda, I believe, which is a shared service agreement with the City of Linden to make sure that we have appropriate police staffing, not just security, but appropriate number of Linden police officers to be assigned at varsity football and basketball games, correct? So that's on the agenda, on the agenda tonight.
Okay. And then my last thing was the file code, 5131.6. I read this pretty thoroughly tonight. Will non-smoke, like no smoking signs be posted at these facilities? I mean, the Tiger Stadium is ours, right? But I'm saying, like, say, the baseball games, they're down at Memorial Field. I know they're used by outside, you know, townships and, you know, PAL, different organizations, as well as us. Would that be signage posted at these venues, no smoking?
We can look into that, and so I can get back to you on that.
Okay. Thank you.
I would be remiss if I didn't say a few words about Tanya here. Tonight, the board's approval of our new supervisor of World Languages, ESL bilingual, Ms. Miguelas, marks not just a milestone for one individual, but for our entire district. You have certainly chosen the right person. Having had the privilege of teaching alongside Tanya for several years at LHS, and working with her for over 15 years, I've witnessed firsthand the passion, commitment, and genuine love she has for our students. And Tanya's journey to this moment has not been one of mere chance or luck. It has been a journey paved with relentless hard work, unwavering dedication, and steadfast belief in the potential of all children. Every decision she makes, every path she chooses, is anchored in what's best for kids. And this quality, paired with her experience, makes her ideal leader for this role. Tanya, you're gonna do great things. Congratulations.
Hi, Donna Hernandez, 133 Princeton Road. I just want to say to all our principals, I've said this before, we have awesome staff, our principals, maintenance, custodians, everybody. So I just want to congratulate everybody. It takes a village, our students, again, our staff, community. We all got to work together. The, I think it was yesterday when you went to the middle schools. So I did hear from parents, and their students did go home, and they did listen. They heard what the students were saying. And my daughter even had a student come up to her and said, you know, "I really listened to what you all said, and I hope to be there one day in your shoes." So I want to say thank you, you know, and I hope you do that every year. And again, I hope everybody enjoyed their dinner. That was great. Thank you for having that, and I hope everybody has a good evening. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Fleming, thank you for your service. I thought next month was gonna be your last meeting, but I, I don't know, maybe it is. But thank you for, you know, everything you did.
Thank you.
Enjoy your cake. It looks good.
I'm gonna enjoy that cake.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Hello.
Hello, hello.
Hi. How's everybody doing? My name's John Kaser. I live at 23 West Mansell Avenue. It's my first time speaking at a Board of Ed meeting. I've attended a lot of them. I'm a staple at the city council meetings. In fact, I'm running right now for six ward council. I love the city. I love my ward. I didn't go to this school, but I like, I'm honest, I love Seoul where I went, and I graduated from Linden High School. That was awesome. I felt like I was in a time warp. That young man, Miles, he's awesome. He reminds me of my best friend that graduated from here. I actually showed my best friend a picture of him, and he looks just like him. Really positive kid. I like that. I read this also. I like this. Really positive. You know, I started experimenting myself in high school and had a negative impact on my life. I'm a certified recovery coach. If you ever have any programs at the schools, I'd love to come speak to the children. What else I got here? So, a few things. So the protocol, I'm curious about. There's someone in the school system right now working with a charge on them of assault with a deadly weapon that could cause bodily injury or did cause bodily injury. I don't know how it goes. I'm all about innocent until proven guilty. I do know in the past, though, that somebody had a much lesser charge. They were put on suspension until it was worked out. And when it was found out that they were innocent or the charges were dropped, they were given their position back. So there's some questions. There's some rumors going on, on who this person knows. Why are they not suspended? There's some coworkers that are afraid to speak up about it because of retaliation or whatever. So I'm always one that comes in front of people and says what needs to be said. So they're not really sure, and a few of them are worried about, you know, working with somebody like that. So I don't know what the deal is with that. Anyone could comment on it?
I have no idea what he's talking about.
This is comments for you.
I wouldn't talk about personnel matter.
Okay, okay, okay. I'm just letting you know about it. It's public info anyway, so I could give that out later. Anyway, so this year, you started off the year with a few teachers missing. School two has a teacher missing, I believe. School six has a math teacher missing, I think. So the kids are starting off the year with substitute teachers. And we're giving out these huge exorbitant salaries to admin positions. I don't know if you've ever seen a teacher salary or it's paced up. It's pretty low. I know a lot of teachers are leaving for other schools. And I just think we have to do something to get those teachers in here. I do get offended when I hear numbers of 12 and 39%, because I know for a fact you could come to these schools, and I know these teachers work so hard. I got a great education at Linden High School and all the Linden schools, so I applaud their effort on that. Last thing, and the major thing, the major point I came to, because like I said, I'm running for city council, so I have to let the citizens know what's going on in this town, okay? A few of you are running also in this upcoming school board election. Mr. De La Cruz, we don't know each other personally, but we know of each other, I'm sure. And you're running on the slogan, "Putting Children First." I'm a little offended by that because of the fact that earlier in this year, the mayor, there's an article that says he collaborated with you guys, okay? I don't look at it as a collaboration. I explained this last month at the city council meeting, and I said I messed the numbers up, and I did. I said you guys gave him $1 million. He actually came to you, and I think it was a strong-arm robbery. He gave you the Armstead armbar, and he needed $10 million, because he was over $10 million in the municipal side. So they said it was fiscal wizardry. I'm calling it what it is. It's smoke and mirrors. You can't be giving this man money. You were talking about expansions to school six, okay? The trailers at school six were there 20 years ago, and they were supposed to be temporary. They're still there now. In this day and age, when there's an emergency, a shelter in place, you can't have these kids out there. I'm gonna work for the kids in the school district, in school six, for an expansion. I want the parents of school six students to know that I'll be your voice if you need. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Okay.
Councilman Rivas, welcome.
Good evening, board members. Carlos Rivas, 1415 Hassel Street, Linden. Just about eight months ago was the last time when I had the opportunity to address you and address this board. Many things has happened since then. But here I am tonight. Here I am tonight because I made a commitment. And when I made a commitment on that time, I said that I will be giving you feedback from this side of the bench. It was one thing when I was in that side of the bench, and that is another thing when they decide the bench. My main reason tonight, coming here again, is to start applauding of the job that you're doing. They are... There are always going to be hard things out there, always. There are always going to be challenges that we have to overcome. There were always going to be decisions that are hard to take. And there is always going to be that confidentiality that many of you had in those chairs that you can have to keep with you, because that's part of your job, that I totally understand. And many, many of our guests here in the room will do so as well. And I like to say that I'm liking what I have seen in many decisions that you have made. However, there is still a lot to work on. There's still a lot to be done. And things do not happen from one day to another. It takes time. And sometimes, I'm gonna start from myself. We feel that things are to happen right away. And patience is the mother of all virtues, they said. And I totally understand the hard work and the hard place that you are and how hard those chairs are. So thank you. Thank you for what you're doing. Sometimes it's very hard to receive that recognition, because there is a lot in your plates, there's a lot in your decisions that you have to make. And for that, I have to say that I totally understand what you're doing, and I wish that I could keep cooperating with you as a city official now, in order to keep working for better days for our school district. But the main reason that I took the mic today is because I could not forgive myself if I would not be present to say, "Thank you, Jennifer." You and I had a great time when we serve as a board members together. I think I have many, many long conversations with you when my only goal was to work together with you and to make sure that I could work in the passion and all those values that you have shown to us. I couldn't not be happy if I would not stand tonight to say, "Job well done. Thank you for being a strong woman." And thank you for being supportive to everything that went around you without falling on what you believe. I'm gonna run protocol, but I have to go out there and give you a hug.
I know I already spoke, but I didn't realize, Jennifer, that this was your last night as well. And I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, as a parent. You know, my three children attend the Linden Public School District. The mayor has children that attend the Linden Public School District, and this is why he cares so much about our schools. And I just, like I said, you've dedicated your life to help children. You never wavered, you know? You stayed steadfast and you worked hard. And I know you had some, you know, personal health issues through the pain. Most people don't realize you came to the board meetings in pain, because you believe in our education system. You believe in Linden. You believe in the work that needed to be done in pain. You know, and I really appreciate that. I understand this was a difficult decision for you to make, but you know, your health comes first, your family comes first. And I truly, from the bottom of my heart, the mayor and I would thank you for your dedication and for your service to our town. Thank you. We can't end a meeting without hearing from you, sir.
Traditions are traditions.
All right, good evening, everybody. Rob Mengele, 18 Trinity Place, Montclair, New Jersey, LHS Social Studies teacher, proud LEA president. As I was watching our celebration for Principals Month, I was thinking, "I cannot wait to see what y'all have in store for ESP Appreciation Day, Teacher Appreciation Day, Custodial Maintenance Appreciation Day, Administrative Professionals Day, School Counselors Week." If anybody wants to know, I have all the dates. I'll gladly share. Looking forward to Kitchen 27. Now that we're a few months into the year, our staff have been ironing out wrinkles and helping our students grow. As I visit schools, I see classrooms buzzing with energy, offices full and lively, and everywhere in between filled with the hope that only, that you can only find in schools. Mrs. Perkins presented on our standardized testing data today. And one of the things that I tell my students when I meet them at the beginning of the school year is that I won't test them. I'm a firm believer that they are more than the scores that they get on these tests. They are more than a number on a page. And while that data is useful, that data is not telling the story. The story is the energy in these buildings. The story is the staff that show up day in and day out. One of the downsides to being understaffed, and it's, I know it's not just in Linden, it's everywhere, is that more work gets put on fewer people. And the fewer people that continue to show up to this district are busting their tails for these kids. They're busting their tails for this city. The LEA's been out in the community. Our pride grants, our dues dollars have had us participating out at the Linden PBA Golf Classic, the Kiwanis Club Taste of Linden. We're funding programs all over the district through our FAST grants, Families and Students Together. We'll be out again this Sunday at the annual Halloween parade. We'll be there with our black and yellow, black and orange tent right on Blankie Street. Come see us. We'll have candy and some goodies and some giveaways. But know, y'all, that this, you know, these folks deserve to be celebrated just as much as our building principals. I'm looking forward to it. I'll see y'all in November. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Joseph Fleming, 909 Washington Avenue, Linden, New Jersey. Superintendent Perkins, Dr. Burghammer.
Supervisor Miguelas, congratulations, and Director Armstead.
And the board. I've watched you for the last three years tirelessly. You guys started during COVID a once-in-a-generation pandemic. Sam Malaysia, Ms. Fleming's running mate. I watched you guys run, sit in the hot seat, the anger and the vitriol and the misunderstanding from the community, and with grace and poise, you went forward to make our district better. I am so proud of all of you. I stand here now, looking at the board, looking at our district, and the fights that you've won on behalf of our students. And a lot of people don't understand, you guys don't get paid to do any of this. So you come, and you sit, and you try to work your hardest for a district, and you do this on your own time. And you fight for the paraprofessionals to get more funding. You work with the teachers to try to negotiate contracts. And I really do feel that this board now is stronger and is of one mind, and is working on behalf of not just the city, but a holistic approach to tie the school board...
on behalf of not just the city, but a holistic approach to tie the school board and the city together because it does take a village, like you like to say, Ms. and Dr. Burghammer. I want you to know, I see it. And I don't think, like some other people, that it's collusion to work together to make our city better. I think that makes us stronger. I don't want a separation of our school and a separation of the other council. And no, we should be working on initiatives together because we're one people, we're one township. And it starts with the schools, but it also starts with our households. And if we can't hold the line on one area, we can't hold the line anywhere else. So I thank you all for everything you do. I see it because I see my wife, my beautiful wife who's sitting there today, running this meeting today, coming home tired, getting packets of information that she has to go over, and she has a normal job just like each and every one of you. And I don't think it's very easy for the public to say, because they're tired and they come home and they have children. I have children too, we had five boys. And they say, "Hey, why isn't everything fixed immediately?" But I see over the months and over the years, you guys are moving this town forward. And even though I won't be here, I will make sure I will tune in, and I want to see this town continue to move forward into the future. Thank you to all of the principals, thank you to all of the teachers. We love you, we respect you, thank you for everything you guys do. And finally, to my wife, thank you. I am proud and honored to be your partner, and thank you for everything you did to this city.
Your three minutes are up, sir. I love you. I'll hug him later, I'll hug him later.
I'm going to mess it up, I don't know. Hi, my name is Breonna Taylor, 716 Carnegie Street. Just want to say congratulations to all the principals, to everyone. Community definitely builds all the kids. You know, me being a substitute experiencing what Ms. Perkins put together was fantastic. Like, I feel like we didn't really have that. We didn't have people come down from the high school, show us when we were younger, you know, what we want to aspire to be. And it was great to have them come up, speak, have the high schoolers, you know, take on that responsibility. It was really good to see, you know, at being a sub here at McManus. It was really nice, you know? So, another thing I wanted to speak about, I started a nonprofit organization, Linden United Soccer Club. I had the pleasure of bringing them inside for the winter, starting in November to December. We have a winter supplemental going on. I just wanted to make sure everybody in Linden knew about it. I'm also providing tutoring for our kids, which I'm super excited about because I'm trying to be a mathematics teacher here in Linden, do an alternate route. And I'm doing, I'm giving tutoring to the kids because I do have a mathematics degree. So if we can give it to the kids, to help them with their mathematics, help them grow, help them develop in that aspect, so they can do better on the testing that Ms. Perkins just presented to us, I think it'll be a great attribute to the kids, and I'm letting everybody know. So, thank you for all that you do. Thank you, Ms. Fleming, everybody. Fantastic.
Do we have any comments online? No. No more comments?
We will move to old business, new business?
Yes, I have something. I would like to know about the audits that we're going to do on our busing company because as I drive through to drop my kids off or pick them up, I do see bus drivers with an AirPod in their ears. I would like to know about what we're doing about the audits on our bus companies.
Well, we'll look into this because, you know, we've reached out to the bus companies themselves, but yeah, this needs to be addressed.
Anyone else? We'll move on to board member comments. We'll just go ahead and go all the way around, starting from that side. We're going to go right here, I'm the board president today. So we're going to start right here. And we'll go all the way around so nobody gets confused.
Good evening to everyone present. I would just like to keep it short and sweet. I would like to congratulate all award recipients, also our principals, and I would like to give a special shout out to Mr. Walker again, and also Ms. Principato, who is actually my Italian teacher. Ms. Fleming, it was an honor to get to know you, not just as a board member, but as a person. You welcomed me with open arms, you've been very nice to me, and you've also guided me on things I should do. And I've absorbed everything, and even though you're leaving, I will apply it, and we obviously hope to continue to see you here in any way, shape, or form. Thank you.
I'm going to say, we've had a nice, long meeting today again. Once again, congratulations to the principals. Thank you, guys, for coming out day in and day out, also in supporting our kids. We're there for you. We're there for our administration, we're there for our teachers, and we're there for our students. What was I going to say? Jen, three years ago, we came under slogan, "Children first," okay? With Malaysia, we hit those streets, we made phone calls, we did texts. And three years later, I am happy to say, us as a team. Apparently, they did not get the memo that we don't have any more students at the School Six trailers, okay? That was our efforts, that we pulled the students out, knock them with. We got an approval for expansion of School Six, and that was us as a team that we've gotten that. And I do thank you for that because that was the motto that we came on, and we continue on looking on expansion because we do know that we need more classrooms. The city of Linden is not getting smaller, it's getting bigger. There's buildings coming up, we know we need more classrooms. And that's what we're striving for, and that moving forward, we will do it. Three years is not long enough for a term to get something done. It takes, it didn't take a day to build Rome, they always say that saying, it takes a lot. And it takes a village to build this city. And we are going to build this city much better. We are going to get more classrooms. That's our goal. We're here for our students. Moving forward, students are first, our teachers are just in line with the students because we want them to, we want the best teachers out there. And we're going to keep on filling positions the way we are now, moving forward, and we're going to keep on being positive. With the support of the parents, with the support of your board that's been listening and moving forward. And as you can see, we even had parents that came out last month saying about the games going back to Friday night. Students came out, voiced their opinion. Your board is listening, and we are moving forward. Thanks to your support. Jen, thank you for everything, Jen. I wish you could have had another three years here with us, but you don't want to. And Mr. Fleming over there is looking at me, I feel him also right now. I guess he's ready for the next chapter. You will always get a call from me. You're not going to be far. Thank you for everything you've done, and thank you for your service also.
Thank you, Sam.
I don't want to start from the beginning, but like we said, thank you to all the principals that have been recognized tonight. This is a little thing for everything that you do with our kids in our schools. After Ms. Olivero, which she has my heart and she knows it, I want to recognize the principal of School Nine, Ms. Principato, which I know her for a long time also, who has shown me how much she loves, what she do, and the love that she has of our childrens. Every time I have seen her engage on many of activities around the schools and around the city, plan to benefit all the kids. Thank you for being more than a caring person, but a mother to our childrens in Linden. To our School One principal, Ms. Norma Diaz, who had the opportunity to witness her professionalism since the first day of her employment in Linden. She rolled out the sleeves and started to support and work together with her staff to implement the necessary strategies to become a better school in our district. Thank you. I think it would be remiss if during the celebration of our principals tonight, we do not make time to also recognize and to make the moment to thank all the staff and their schools. Without a doubt, they are the backbone of their success. And also because of all of them, our children receive the education we expect from our school district. So, thank you, guys. I want to express my appreciation and recognition to my colleague, Ms. Jennifer Fleming, the board member, who is the last tonight, the last meeting tonight. I might not have spent many months sharing this meeting for on with you, but I have learned about your passion and care for our school district business. Long before I became the board member, I want to recognize how committed you have been to making the best decisions needed to keep our school district running. You have shown how committed you were, even when you might not think that your vision was not fully understood by many, and that you did not stop to keep moving forward. You stood on your values and grounds qualities that make you a real leader. And your footprints during your time as a school board member in Linden are to be seen for many years to come. Ladies and gentlemen, please raise your hands and join me in a round of applause for a woman who has demonstrated herself to be as strong as anyone would have wanted her to be, defending our childrens and working towards achieving better days for our Linden school system. And lastly, I would like to congratulate everyone who has, who was recognized tonight as an It Takes a Village program. The actions of all of you guys demonstrate the responsibility that we have in our arms to work together as a community, to continue to collaborate in the education of our childrens. Parents and friends in the audience tonight, we are counting on you, we cannot do this alone, and I'm confident that we are continuing to achieve greatness with all of your help. Thank you, have a great night.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so happy to see everyone here again tonight. It seems like we come in and we show out, and that's a great thing. Now, congratulations to all the principals and to everyone who was honored tonight. Thank you very much for everything that you guys have done and everything that you're doing. It's just a step, it's a stepping stone. Everyone takes a step forward. We got to help one another, you know? And since I've been sitting here, I've always said, "I'm for the children, and I'm for the children." You know, it doesn't matter what goes on, it matters what happens. And we have to pull each other up instead of just banging each other down and putting them down, you know? Each one teach one. You can't sit up and tell me that you can't do this and we can't do that, and you keep bashing us. You come to us when you need something, and then when we don't do, you have a problem with it. We're doing it, and we're making it happen. And thank you for coming, and thank you for supporting us, and thank you for saying the things that you have to say to us, we appreciate it. But don't appreciate me and then knock me down at the same time because that's not fair. That's not fair to my colleagues. That's not fair, and it's not fair to the parents neither. And it's not fair to the teachers. The teachers are doing a damn good job. I tip my hat to you guys, and I appreciate you so much, you know? Jennifer, hey, you leaving us? You're leaving us. We have had our ups and downs, our back and forbs. You teach us, you have taught us things to say and things to do, and we appreciate you. And I know you want to leave, but there's always a door open for you to come back whenever you decide to say, "Hey, what's going on?" And Ms. Perkins, thank you for your, the presentation, I appreciate that because we got to start somewhere. You know, the kids is learning, and it's hard for them, and we have to let them know that we do appreciate them, and we know that it takes time for them to get to where they want to be. And it's not, it doesn't happen overnight. You know, people knock the scores or whatever. Yeah, we want to see scores, but we got to make sure the kids is getting what they need to get. And thank you for doing it, I appreciate that. Okay? Thanks, everybody, for coming out, thank you very much, have a great evening. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
I was going to go next, but I'll wait.
I'm president?
Oh, that's right, I'm president.
Sorry. Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for showing up. I love when I come into the meetings and I see so many people, it's really nice to see you guys here. So thank you for taking the time out of your day to show up, and like Ms. Pinot said, show up and show out. Just wanted to touch on two things before I send my congratulations off to our faculty. There was a student named Ivan Hartwell who attended Linden High School, who recently passed this August, this past August. I was not at the last public meeting, but I just wanted to offer up my condolences to his family. He was a very joyful kid, and I did attend school with him. Was not particularly close to him, but it's always very tragic when we lose one of our own. So if you know the Hartwell family, reach out, you know, things like this, you take a toll on the family, so it'd just be nice, you know, to offer some condolences, some kind words, and just to give people grace. And another thing I would like to touch on, we have a young student named Austin Miller, who's a previous graduate of Linden High School, who, while most young people are celebrating 21st birthdays, attending school, graduating from college, celebrating new career moves, he's currently battling a brain tumor. And, you know, I also attended school with him as well. His family, they're amazing, you know, real pillars of our community, and, you know, reaching out, offering some kind words, making a donation. I have it posted on my Instagram page, and I also have a link in my bio to their fundraiser, not making obligated to donate, but just letting you know that it's out there because he's really fighting for his life right now, and I'm sure the family would appreciate anything. And even if it's just some kind words, I'm sure the family would definitely appreciate it, so just putting that out there. On a lighter note, I would first like to offer up my congratulations to Tanya McCallas. You are so deserving of this position. I can't escape you because, like I say at other meetings when we have promotions, you are at any and everything, anything. Whether it's not for the students, you're at city events, you're showing up, you're volunteering, you're helping, and you really deserve this position. So congratulations, I'm so excited for you, and our district is thrilled to have you. I would also like to congratulate Dre Ha. He is our Linden High School varsity basketball coach, who also got a position today, so big congratulations to him. He does a lot with the boys, and I think that, you know, coaching is a job that sometimes goes unnoticed because we don't see the days. And I, you know, I played sports in high school. You don't see those nights where you're with the students and you're trying to uplift them, not just, not just in the sport, but whether it's personal issues, encouraging them to do well academically. So, thank you, Dre Ha, for all that you do, and thank you to all the new hires, we're extremely happy to have you in our district. Thank you to all the principals, a lot of you guys have taught me, and I'm very excited to be, you know, as I grow, I get to see you guys grow in your careers, and it's really exciting. Like I said, it's a full circle moment. I would also like to congratulate the It Takes a Village recipients and all of our students that performed with perfect test scores with our state, with our state testing. I know that the testing is just a number, and there's like a lot more that goes on behind the scenes, but I would just like to congratulate your efforts. And I would also like to acknowledge some people that I see often in the meetings, whether it's Rob, whether it's Donna, Tanya, or Breonna Taylor, I think you guys are always showing up and showing out for us because you guys always add value to the conversation. Thank you to Kitchen 27 for your amazing donation, and I also would like to give a shout out to Mr. Paskevich, who helped me coordinate a field trip to the Drew Barrymore Show with the students that I took off of work to make sure that I can go to. Thank you, Mr. Paskevich, for all that you do, I really do appreciate you. And last but not least, I have to give a big thank you to Ms. Fleming. I know that she's sitting up there, but typically on board meetings, she sits next to me. She's my buddy, she's my neighbor. And what many of you guys don't know is that when I first started, I was terrified. I talk a lot, but it's very nerve wracking to have to do it at such a I, I talk a lot, but it's very nerve wracking to have to do it at such a public facing event. And Jennifer would like write me notes and say, "You should say this," or like, you know, you know, speak on this agenda item. Or no, just encourage me to have a voice when I thought I didn't have one. And I just wanted to thank you for always providing guidance, for providing wisdom, for the calls, for the mentorship. You know, you made this journey a lot easier and a lot smoother. You will definitely be missed. Like everybody else has said here before, the doors are always open. And thank you for all that you've done. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, all. Thank you, Mrs. Perkins, for the testing presentation. We appreciate all the staff members for helping and guiding our students through the state testing. Congratulations to the recipients of It Takes a Village Award. I would also like to congratulate the principals who received the Well Deserved Recognition Awards. I would like to point out, School Number 2 Principal, Mr. Fingerlin, for all his support and professionalism. And I hold him dear in my heart, because he has helped my family and I in the past, and it is much appreciated. To Ms. Fleming, you will be missed. It has been an honor to work side by side with you. Thank you for your service to our country and our district. Best of luck to you and your new endeavors. Congratulations to Tanya Miguelas and Danny Orlean. Thank you for bridging the gap with the parent involvement for parents who have difficulties with the language barriers. Having them involved will help all their, their kids. And we really appreciate that you're, all the work that you're doing. Lastly, but not least, I would like to thank Brianna Taylor. Thank you for organizing a nonprofit organization for our youth, the tutoring service that you provide, and also for just giving back to our community. Thank you and good night.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out this evening. I'd just like to say a congratulations to all the awardees. Everyone who received an award this evening, you are truly deserving of it. The climate of this district is changing. And I hope that everyone feels that. The climate is changing in ways that has been unimaginable. The curriculum is changing. Professional development, changing in softwares that we're using, hearing from our students, hearing from our athletes, student athletes, our multilingual learners program, from different trainings, the transparency and test scores that we're receiving. And test scores, they don't really tell the whole story, as Rob had mentioned earlier. And it isn't the be all, end all for our students. So, thank you, Mrs. Perkins, for presenting that information. But let's continue to push our students to be their best selves and their authentic selves. Okay? The climate is changing, and we all have to adapt to that change. And this board has worked very, very hard to make sure that change is happening and this district is moving in a positive direction. Let's continue to push forward. Jen, it's, it's bittersweet, because I know that you're ready to go. But back in 2020, when we started campaigning, we had no idea what any of this wouldn't tell. We didn't know that we would have to go door to door during the pandemic with our mask on, knocking on doors, residents looking at us like we're crazy because we're knocking on their doors and COVID is spreading rapidly. But we did it anyway. We made phone calls, and we walked night and day. Me, you, Sam, and all of the other people who helped us, the students who walked with us, the students that helped you, that looked up to you, that continued to connect and walk and talk with you till this day. You've made a huge impact. Thank you for continuing your fight. All of us may not have agreed on a lot of things, but no one really needs to know that on the floor. But we made it through, and you continue to push and fight for our students and our staff and our teachers and our admin and everyone in the community. So, I just wanna thank you for your service all around. And you'll truly be missed, and I can't wait to see your garden.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone. And thank you all again for coming out. It's truly appreciated. And again, myself and Sam, this is also our last term here on the board as well. You may see mailers go out, see us running again. We can't tell you how to vote, but do what you do best and whatever you feel in your heart. And we thank you for always supporting everything that the board has done and continues to do. Have a good evening, everyone.
You know, Rob, you know, when you made your speech just now, you talked about all the other events and celebrating all the staff and employees. Would you believe it? Yesterday, I was sitting with Tanya, and Tanya was holding my hand. And she was saying, "What, what if we find a way to celebrate all the high school teachers for Thanksgiving?" And she was sitting with me, and we were trying to figure out what we could do to let everyone in our school district know that we see them. I promise you, if I win the Lotto, I will. You know, but listen, I love to celebrate people. This board love, love to celebrate people. And believe it or not, all the different things that you see happening, we actually go and ask people. And right now, I'm thinking of Chick-fil-A. You said Chick-fil-A? I'm thinking of going after different companies to see if I could find other opportunities to celebrate our employees. So, we are trying our best. I wanna thank Ms. Hernandez, and I wanna thank Ryan, Mr. Deveney, because when, you know, there's a lot that goes on behind the scene to make the simple things possible. And tonight, when we, when I came in and I said, "You know, I want to celebrate the principals. Mr. Deveney, Ms. Hernandez, could you go in the back and make sure that the principals are comfortable?" They just said, "Sure." They didn't even ask a question. And this is what teamwork is all about. It's like, you know, Ms. Hernandez came and says, "Last month, someone else was running the meeting. This month, someone else is running the meeting." And I said, "There is no "I" in team. We are a council. We are all individuals, but we work as one. We are all. I see each and everyone sitting right next to me as a, as a board president. We all are, because we all make decisions equally. It's not about each one individually. It's about us working together as a team. And this team celebrate not only our Board of Education, but our community and the people in Linden. We want to be the wind beneath your wings. When you're walking in the sand and you look there, we want to, we want our footsteps to be right next to yours, so that we could go to the other end together. You know, and I thank everyone for coming. And Ms. Jennifer, all right, board president?
I wanna thank you very, very much for the last three years. I have grown a lot because of you. I have humbled because of you. I cried and I fought because of you. But you know what? I love you, girl. And thank you very much. And save Junie, okay? Thank you and have a good night.
I won't keep you. That cake over there needs visitors. So, please, let, let's cut it and share it as a community. I do wanna thank you for allowing me to serve you. I believe everybody should have the opportunity to volunteer. It teaches you something that I think that everyone should have the opportunity to learn. I wanna thank my board members, my, my running mates, Malaysia and Sam. We worked hard. We, people don't know. When we got here to the board, it was arguments across the table. There was no respectful disagreements. I argue with each and every one.
I argue with everyone?
But it's a respectful disagreement. I respectfully disagree, because I love you as a person, as a human being, as a community. There are things that you can say, things that you can feel. But if you learn how to say them in a way that the other person can accept it and not push back from you, it's how you say things to people. It's how you treat people. So, I would just like to say, be kind to one another. Be kind to yourself. This is a great community. It's diverse. This is the most diverse community that I think I've ever belonged to. And I have traveled. You got, every, there, you guys have a beautiful town. I keep saying that. Beautiful. You're beautiful. The whole town is beautiful. It was an honor to have Ms. Perkins sitting here and being able to be here, to have a strong woman of color that can do the job and show up and be great at what she does. It, it's, it's an honor for me to see women on the board, because it's usually a men's, a man's world out there. I thank God that Sam stayed. And I thank God that we have men in our lives that allow us to shine. We have a lot to offer. Everybody has a lot to offer. And I think the diversity that we have should be celebrated. And Mr. Kazor, I, I don't know where he's sitting, but I would like to respond. This board fought for our community, for our teachers. We put a contract together that gave our teachers a terrific raise, a great, we wanted what they wanted. We put together a great contract. We fought for the paraprofessionals. We deposited a million dollars into the paraprofessionals account. We wanna take care of our teachers. We love our teachers. They are the people who get up every single day and take care of our families, our children, our most precious children. So, you had a lot to say, and some of it, I have no idea what you were talking about. But I would hope that my board members would look into it. But don't be confused. We fight for our school. And I feel a little, I, I feel like this is my family. So, you know, when you come and start talking about my family, I, I get a little stressed, like right here. It, it just like builds up, because I feel protective. We have a great community. And I would suggest that we all protect what's valuable here and not let anybody cause division. That's the problem right now. Everybody's angry. Please, spread love, kindness, patience, grace. If you have a problem or you see something needs to change, if it's speaking to you, that's probably your, your issue. You should be handling that. The superintendent has a, has a door you can walk through. She has a phone number. There's a chain of command. If you have a problem with the teachers at school, you talk to the teacher. If you have a problem that doesn't get taken care of, then you talk to their supervisor, right? You go to the superintendent. There's a chain of command. And about security, I am military. We, Sam and I are military. We do not discuss for a reason. And you might not understand, but it, there is a reason. It's for protection of our community. Because if somebody wants to hurt somebody, and they know what we have, and they know where we're at, it's a lot easier to do things. So, I'm terribly sorry, and I, I heard what you said. And, but I do not agree with sharing security, information with anybody, with anybody. As long as we're secure, we're okay. And it's our job to make sure that our children and community is secure. I would like to thank John. I'm sorry. Paul. I'm sorry. I don't have any more makeup on. I haven't cried like all day until today. I thank you, all of you. I remember. I remember. And I am so glad that you're sitting here. And I appreciate you. And I love you. And you're my family. And I will miss you, all of you. Thank you. Have a good night.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn.
Roll call.
Mr. Dela Cruz.
Yes.
Ms. Pino.
Yes.
Ms. Rosada Quezada.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes.
Ms. Armstead.
Yes.
Ms. Carrillo.
Yes.
Ms. Sintron.
Yes.
Dr. Berghammer.
Yes.
And Mrs. Fleming.
Take time.